At this time, we have public participation, Mr. Greg Richard. We have public participation by Mr. Greg Richard here in the building. Okay, I guess he's not here. Moving on to staff reports, Dr. Porter.
President Barti, board members, it has been a wonderful day. Everything is going well thus far. This is the last week of the school, this last week before Thanksgiving break, and we're excited about that. Our students are doing well, our teachers are teaching, and everything is going well. At this time, I'm going to ask Mrs. Lot to give you some highlights of what's been going on, and then we'll conclude our staff reports.
One second, before Mrs. Lot gets started, I want to let the record reflect that Mr. Gaywood joined us at 6:00 PM. Sorry, Mrs. Lot, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. This is our media report since we last met. So it covers October 27 through today, throughout the month of...
Very much. It's a little chilly, it's a little mippy.
Throughout the month of November, we have had 10 observances. Clockwise from the top left, our De Queen students continue to celebrate breast cancer awareness by creating a human breast cancer ribbon. The campus also received a book vending machine from the United Way. We had our first quarter report cards were issued, so all of our campuses celebrated our honor roll students, and you can see some of those celebrations taking place in some of these pictures. The bottom-left corner, the Memorial High School Human Development Course is doing the baby simulation where they have the little baby doll and they have to take care of it like a real child. So that has been a lot of fun, and the kids are actually sounding off in the comments. Those who took the class previously are comparing what happened then to the kids who are taking the class now. Our campuses have been taking our students on field trips to various places. The top middle, Portakers Elementary is celebrating college T-shirt days, and each class has a different campus that they are representing. The Sam Houston Gardening Club is hard at work. The bottom right shows on Halloween, the Alpha, Abraham Lincoln Fine Arts Academy, one of their classes, where really was, it seemed to be a campus effort. They created a, what they call a chiller, a thriller short film, and it had animation in it, it had choreography in it, and it seemed like it was fine arts visually shown in the thriller video, not thriller, but thriller. Wilson Early College students took a trip to LIT, and the bottom left shows a group of elementary students who actually visited Rayo's Bakery. Campus, district-wide, all of the campuses celebrated Halloween, and it was very exciting to see the high school kids actually celebrating Halloween. As you can see, they wore costumes to campus, and we also found some throwback pictures from Wheatley School of Early Childhood, the '84, '85 school year. We posted some of the pictures. It was several, like, group pictures from classes from Halloween, and it was interesting to see the people who worked at Wheatley at that time commenting in the comment section and seeing the old-school Halloween costumes, how the masks have changed over time. And here are some more campus, campuses observing Halloween. The bottom-left corner, Valero visited Booker T. Washington Elementary in the gym, so they had trick-or-treat on campus. There were several tables set up, and as the kids made their way around the perimeter of the gym, they were given Halloween treats. Thomas Jefferson celebrated their homecoming, so here's a few of the pictures, but on the Thomas Jefferson Facebook page, there are several more photos of the homecoming court and the students throughout the week for homecoming and at the homecoming dance. At the bottom, in the middle, Wilson Early College students went on a recruitment visit to Abraham Lincoln Fine Arts Academy, and there was a recruitment video produced by our media team that featured the students that attend Wilson Early College in the recruitment video, giving highlights of the campus and sharing what, what they feel the benefits of attending Early College are to encourage students to apply. So that video is on our Facebook timeline as well, and I believe it's also on our YouTube channel. All of our campuses across the district celebrated Veterans Day, and here are photos from some of those celebrations. Many campuses honored the veterans that worked there. There were multiple live streams of Veterans Day programs where they invited veterans and honored veterans, and so the Travis Elementary program is on our YouTube channel because the media team livestreamed it, but the campuses who also had their own personnel to film, they also have the videos on their Facebook pages where you can see those programs. Our staff has been attending professional development conferences. The top-left shows the science teachers from Alpha who attended Statcast with our secondary science supervisor. The top-right, a group of our nurses attended the Texas School Nurses Organization Conference, and the bottom-left, our language other than English teachers attended the annual Texas Foreign Language Association Conference. So across the district, our teachers are gaining professional development. In our athletics, unfortunately, our football season came to a close, but not without lots of celebrations for the team beforehand. We had a red-out for our PA versus Barbers Hill game. We had a very nice seniors' night, and the photos from the seniors' night were a big hit on our social media. We had an athlete of the week in the Port Arthur News, Journey McZeele, who is a senior at Wilson Early College. She was featured as the athlete of the week for that particular week. I don't think it has a date, but it's been within, since the last time we met. I always like to see when the football players visit campuses, and these are football players visiting campuses, and you can tell how, how the students are excited to engage with the football team. The band was, was voted band of the week for Week 11, and then the bottom-right, if you haven't seen or heard, our principal played the trombone at one of our football games, and the public really loves, they love the video. Every video we put out of Dr. Small seems to go viral, from the, from the pep rally where he was stepping around the gym to the playing the trombone. Even his principal highlight video has gone viral, which you'll see in some of the slides coming up. Our auxiliaries were featured on 12 news, the daybreak show, which they had to get up very early and be at the gym dressed in, in position for 5:45 AM, and we actually promoted the fact that they were going to be live at 6:10 in the morning and 6:40 in the morning. I believe this was our last football game before the playoff, but we really had people from the community who tuned in because we promoted the fact that they would be on, and we told the public what time to watch and what channel. So that was a really good, successful news appearance, and even before it got to that point, the reporter who came out, who made the request and came out to interview the kids, said that she was, she and her friends were fans of the Marching Heat band, so she was excited to come out. The district received a Benefits for Children grant from Valero in the amount of $140,000, and that will benefit six of our campuses. The Portakers Elementary held their annual Community Health and Wellness Fair. We did get a picture from the community that there is actually some business. The Sonic on West Port Arthur Road has our Titan Spirit sign in the window, and so we're still hoping to see more of our spirit signs up around town. And we have started letting parents know when the start testing dates are for this testing season, the retesting in December, and then the new testing in the spring. Here are some more of our community engagement activities. We had a Hispanic Heritage Month Extended Celebration that was very well-attended. The Titan Salon had its grand opening, and we have been advertising the upcoming Christmas events. Today, at the Lakefront Park Playground across Pleasure Island, our Wheatley students were invited to the ribbon cutting, and it was so cute to see them get off of the bus and be so excited about what the playground looks like, and they had a blast. They ran around, they played on everything, they started crying when it was time to go. The Kona icy truck was out there, so they all got snow cones, and some of them cried because it wasn't the flavor they wanted, but nonetheless, I think they had a good time overall. They went back to school hyped up on sugar, but I'm pretty sure they're gonna sleep well tonight. And those are some more pictures in the bottom-right of those '84, '85 school year Halloween pictures from, that we found from Wheatley.
That's nice, nice.
More community engagement. We had our first all-in-person Port Arthur City Council PTA meeting this past Wednesday. Prior to the meeting Wednesday, there was a meet-and-greet. We have new officers, and we have, a lot of our campuses are in compliance with the requirements to have an active PTA. Valero donated some flags to Booker T. Washington, so there's a photo for that. There's some photos from the Titan Salon grand opening. It really got a lot of media coverage. I can't remember which one of the TV stations came, but there was a television news story, and both of the newspapers covered the event. Our Lady Titans have been trying to engage the community as well. Their first home game, they invited the elementary kids, and the elementary kids, if they wore a spirit shirt from their campus, they got in the game free, and then the next home game was Jersey Night. So our basketball seasons are in full swing. For our alumni accomplishments, we are taking a group of kids, oh Lord, we are taking a group of kids to see the Egress television series premiere this Saturday at the Jefferson Theater in Beaumont. I believe it'll be eight students and three adults, and it started out as just screening three different episodes, but now it has turned into like a full-on red carpet affair, so hopefully the kids will be excited to walk the red carpet. I'll take pictures of them, and then on tomorrow morning, the alumni, Justin Slaughter, he's going to speak to our secondary students at Wilson at 9:00, and he's gonna speak to three different elementary campuses at 10:30. He went to De Queen, Lakeview, and Travis, so those are the campuses that will be invited to hear him speak at Travis, and then all of our secondary campuses were invited to see him at Wilson. So that will take place on tomorrow. There was another alumni, Charlotte Green Allison. She teaches at Wheatley Early College, I'm sorry, Wheatley School of Early Childhood, and she was featured on a website as a teacher of the month, and so that was like a, you know, like a international website, so we acknowledged her. She is an alumni of the district and now works here. And then we have a young lady, Davana Malvo, who graduated from Memorial in 2010, who is a graduate of Stephen F. Foster University with her bachelor's in dance and then a master's in educational leadership, and she has a principalship certification. She is now the dance director at an early college high school in Houston, but she will be dancing in the Urban Nutcracker in Houston, so we put up a very nice PAISD Amazing Alumni post about her today. And then off the top of my head, I think that probably was the last slide before the media summary, but on the media summary, our videos have really been getting a lot of viewership. Like I said, the, the principal, we, we did videos, spotlights of 14 out of our 16 principals, and Dr. Small's video received the most. And, and, and the overall total of all of the things that the media team has published since we last met, we've had approximately 95,000 views over all of those principal videos, and then there was the livestream of the playoff game, which I want to say is either 6,000 or 8,000 people that watched the livestream of the playoff game. So we're doing really well with being transparent with the community, and I, I think that everybody is pretty satisfied with what we've been sharing as far as what we're doing in the district. I hope I got it all.
Yeah. She has a very good memory, as you see, she started talking. And we want to thank Mrs. Lot. She does an excellent job at keeping everyone informed. I don't think anyone can say they don't know what we're doing, and she puts everything out there. So Mrs. Lot and the media team are excellent, and our, our, our videos are so clear. They're clear and concise, beautiful. So the, the media team has done a great job, and I'm sure that you all saw some of the videos that were on television. It was absolutely incredible. So we're really proud of our students, and we're proud of our media. Also, with our bond, our support service center across the street is doing well. As I said, we finally received electricity, and now they're inside and working outside as well. There are cars there, and Daniels Construction is the contractor and doing a wonderful job. Lincoln Auditorium has almost been completed. We're still waiting on some lighting and a couple of more things to come in on back order, and it will be ready to go. I think, well, Mr. Trent Johnson is looking forward to having the Christmas program, his Christmas program in the auditorium, so that's great. We're working on the Lincoln sidewalks as well, getting those, some of the sidewalks are up due to trees and so forth and breakages, so we're repairing those. The TJ Auditorium is being worked on as well. All of the drawings are coming in, and we're, every day, they have a really good, the LNL, he does a really good job at putting together a general contractor and letting us know what's going on. The athletic additions behind Memorial High School, the covered practice, shot put, the disc, the cages, the practice field, additional lighting, bleachers, and fencing are on the way. We're still doing some things because of the cost. We're looking at how we can restructure. Adams Elementary and Lakeview, remembering the bond, we had in there additions, so they're about to start the additions, the classroom additions to Lakeview and Adams, so that is a good thing, so we're excited about that as well. Dowling Elementary, the PAC relocation, working on that. There have been several meetings, and it's, it's gonna look great once they finish with it. We're doing more, I think, than what we initially started, so that's a good thing. It's a huge building when everything is out. I didn't realize how large it is, so that is a good thing. And of course, we have the Wilson Early High School Tilt Skillet, which is something that you all approved, and we thank you for that, and the Stadium Park Lot Rehabilitation Maintenance Project. All of those things are done. Mrs. Lot did tell you about the dates. Please remember December 5, 2023, at Woodrow Wilson Early College High School. That's when we have the Sounds of the Season, which is, which we sponsor every year. Motiva sponsors it every year, and this year, we have a special guest, and I think we all know Glenn Alexander. He is the son of Glenn and Yoshi Alexander, and he will be a, the conductor, part of the conductor, and he's a pianist as well. So he is one of our very own Port Arthurans, so we want, we want to pack the house at Woodrow Wilson, so that's December 5, and it, we have light refreshments at 6:00, and the concert begins at 7:00 straight up, 7:00. So we are really, really, really excited about that, and I think that is, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Porter. Thank you, Mrs. Lot. Mrs., Secretary Johnson?
Mrs. Lot, I just wanted to add a little note, which I'm sure you probably already knew about it, but I did also attend the All-Region Concert for the students, and Dr. Small was there. I did take some good pictures of him. He waited until the end, and when I walked by, he was like, "Where are my students at? Where are my students?" And I'm like, "I don't know who are, I'm only here to see my godson, but I don't know who's out here," so he did, like, start naming people, and he was insisting on not leaving until he got a picture with them, you know, just to show his support, and they did very well, singing in Latin, Spanish, and even their gospel songs. And it was really nice, and I just, you know, thought that was also a note that, you know, go to every football game and everything like that, but to actually make sure you make it to that too, and not only make it, but let the students know
That you're there.
That you're there to support them. So I thought that was really cool, and I took a picture. I meant to send it to you, but I'll send it just in case you need it. I'm like, I'm like your second hand if I go to events, I'm gonna have to take a picture, but I just wanted to add that note, because he, you know, I was shocked to see him there when I went to the restroom and he was going out, and like I said, he stayed till the end and was like, "I gotta get a picture with everybody," so that was really nice, that event, and the kids did amazing, and, you know, he was there to support, so that was really cool.
President, I'll wait, I'll wait.
Dr. Brown and Mr. Gaywood.
I, I just wanted to acknowledge the beautiful decorations
Yes.
in the building. That's very, very nice.
Ms. Carolyn Collins.
I was gonna say that as well. Ms. Collins has done, she's come in.
Mr. Gaywood?
While we're in the season of acknowledgements, I was actually gonna speak on the same thing that Kim was talking about as well. We have actually four of our students who performed in that concert, but with the concert is also a UIO contest, and so we actually have four students who will be advancing onto the pre-area competition, which were the first, the four students who performed in the concert, and they were Kalen Garden Jr., he is a student at Wilson. We have Carleon Brown, who is also a student at Wilson, Karina Stark, who is a student at Memorial, and Emilio Vasquez, who is a student at Memorial as well. So those are the four students who will be making their way to pre-area, and then hopefully area, and then to state. That competition is not an easy competition, and the higher and higher you go, I actually competed, I, I got done after pre-area. I didn't advance on the area. But that competition consists of them actually being in tune with music as it relates to sight reading. There's a part of the competition where they play exactly one note, and you have to guess exactly what that note is, and then you have to match that note and also sing it. So it's not an easy competition, and I just wanted to highlight that because it's very rare that we have students who make it that far, and wishing them the best of luck in the next round.
And also, we have one of our very own, Mr. Taylor Gaywood, who is walking around and traveling everywhere, so tell us about Black Boys Cry.
Thank you. Aye. Okay, so as Dr. Porter mentioned, I am actually casted in a traveling play as one of the lead actors. I am replacing an actor, so they've already completed the two Houston shows. I have performed in Detroit, Dallas, and Colleen. On December 9 and 10, I will be in Atlanta. Next year, I will be in Las Vegas and New York, and hopefully on the summertime, I will be also performing on a cruise. Very briefly, Black, Black Boys Cry is a stage play that was put together by Harold J. Trotter, who is a well-known and awarded-accredited playwright and director. It's a story basically talking about how we as black men in today's society, we stress so much about trying to be what the society says that we have to be, and it's about four or five friends who are all struggling with different things ranging from gender identity, drugs, drug addiction, sexual addictions, and it's just a variety of things that we're going through. It's an amazing play. I will let you all know, hopefully, when it comes back to Houston. Hopefully, we can bring it to Port Arthur, because it's definitely a show that needs to be talked about in the community, and I was just extremely honored to be casted in this play. We have had so many people to, to say, "Hey, come here, come here, come here," so it's been great to travel and put on for the city. So thank you for acknowledging this. And also, while we're at it, I also was nominated for two Broadway World Awards this year, so I'll find out in January if I receive those two awards, one for Best Actor and Best Supporting Actor in Broadway World Houston.
Ms. Lot?
Yes, and she's actually, she's actually the teacher at Abraham Lincoln at Fine Arts Academy right now. She has a part in The Color Purple that was brought to us by Oprah, so she is in there.
So we have a lot of, we have a lot of talent in Port Arthur, a lot of wonderful things in Port Arthur that have happened, and it's good, and thank you, Ms. Lot, for highlighting all of our alumni and what they're doing. So we need, we try, we are, the board asks that we keep up with that, and so we're trying very hard to keep up with all of, and there's a whole lot to keep up with, and that's a good thing. That's a good problem to have.
Also, before we end the staff report, I would, I would like to send out congratulations to our boys varsity football team for a job well-done this season. It was a job well-done this season. We keep fighting, and we know it get tough and tough, but hey, things happen, and, and we lost our quarterback in the first half of the game, and we had to finish with our backup quarterback, Mr. Jordan Jones, and he did a phenomenal job by coming in and trying to help us get to the next level, but we did fall short, but I'm proud of our kids, and let them know that we're proud of the football team, and we're looking for bigger and better things in that football team, but also, we are all ready to go to, back to San Antonio with basketball. So we in the basket, swing of basketball season, soccer, and baseball, and softball, so we're, we're ready for all these sports. It never ends, so congratulations to our football team once again.
Thank you. That concludes our staff reports.
That concludes the staff reports. Thank you, Dr. Porter, and thank you, staff, for your staff reports. At this time, we will have minutes. Consider that, if appropriate, approve the minutes of the October 26, 2023 Board of Trustees Meeting. Can I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion on the floor by trustee Narcisse. Can I second?
Second.
Second by trustee Ambrose. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Consider agenda. The following items, which of a routine and recurring nature, have been designated, considered agenda item by the board president per policy be local. All of the items in the considered agenda will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a trustee, in which event the item or items will be withdrawn immediately from an individual consideration in its normal sequence after the items not requiring separate discussion has been acted upon. Trustees, I will give you a minute to look through your considered agenda items.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I have the full agenda item number eight.
I'll get a motion to approve, considered agenda items one through seven.
So move.
I have a motion on the floor by trustee Narcisse. Can I second?
Second.
A second by trustee Gaywood. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We have discussion by Mr. Narcisse.
Well, no, it's actually to you and to the attorney. Consider agenda item number eight. It would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act to take action on this tonight. If you can provide clarity on that, Madam President, to the board. Also, the poster needed to be more specific, to properly post for the community to have a chance for public comment or to observe the meeting in person on the agenda item, which is the adopted resolution of sanctioning of a board member.
Miss, Madam Attorney? Okay, can I, so do you need to read the motion? You have the motion, the motion. You have a motion, and you have a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Yes, please.
In response to trustee Narcisse, it is, it is not posted inappropriately. There are only seven of you, so names were not necessary. The fact that we are talking about sanctioning a board member is enough for a public comment, for public notice of what you were doing here today.
Okay, Madam Attorney, and to the board, just so you'd be aware, if you decide to proceed, then perhaps this will be taken to court and possibly voided. You may proceed, Madam.
The only remedy would be that you would have to do it again and post Mr. Narcisse's name. Would you like me to read the resolution, Mr. President?
Yes, please.
This is a resolution of the Port Arthur Independent School District Board of Trustees, resolution to formally censure trustee Jacory Narcisse. Whereas the primary mission of the Board of Trustees is to meet the educational needs of our diverse population by providing a comprehensive quality education for the students of the Port Arthur Independent School District, and whereas the Port Arthur I S D Board of Trustees consist of seven elected members with diverse and varied backgrounds, viewpoints, and life experiences, and whereas those differences are what provide strong leadership, and whereas each member, as a duly-elected official, has the right to respectfully express his or her views without threat and/or oppression from another board member, and whereas each member, as a duly-elected official, has the right to seek information from the administration and legal counsel and legal counsel during deliberations without threat and interference from another member. And whereas the Board's Code of Conduct provides that board members will respect and not question each other's votes or opinions on an issue. And whereas the Board has, at the district's expense, participated in trainings regarding effective and responsive governance and received advice from legal counsel regarding the same. And whereas trustee Jacory Narcissus has engaged in disruptive and combative behavior during executive sessions, deliberations during the twenty-twenty-three year on several occasions. And whereas on October twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, in closed session, trustee Jacory Narcissus demonstrated a lack of respect for individual board members, the Board's collective decision-making process, sought to prevent an open and honest discussion, engaged in name-calling, and failed to respect differences of opinion among trustees. And whereas on October twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, trustee Narcissus's behavior, language, and conduct toward fellow board members fell to meet the professional standards for an elected official or the minimum standards expected of any trustee. And whereas on October twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, board members attempted to resolve the behavior issues of trustee Narcissus. And whereas trustee Narcissus exhibited no remorse for his behavior and indicated his intent to continue the behavior exhibited throughout twenty-twenty-three and particularly on October twelfth, twenty-twenty-three in future meetings. And whereas censure by a public body is a collective judgment of stern condemnation of one of its members for behaviors or actions that violate a code of conduct. It is also a formal public act of disapproval of a member's unacceptable conduct. And now therefore be it resolved that this board does hereby censure, disavow, and formally express its disapproval of trustee Jacory Narcissus's conduct described above. Be it further resolved that the Board does hereby direct trustee Jacory Narcissus to properly perform his duties as a board member by participating in training to understand his role as a member of this board, and cease and decease from engaging in disrespectful treatment of fellow board members. Thank you.
Um, Madam Attorney, at this time, do we have to call for a vote for that? Okay, I would like to do a call for a vote and then do a roll call vote on that with Ms. LeBlanc, please. Yes.
Vice President Lotham?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Alro?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Getwood?
I would like to recuse my vote, please.
No. Let the record reflect that the motion passes. Personnel, Dr. Porter?
Board members, I have given you a list of teachers for consideration.
Consider it appropriate to approve employment of teachers. Can I motion?
So move.
I have a motion on the floor by trustee Getwood in a second.
Second.
Second by trustee Narcissus. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Dr. Porter?
I am asking for your approval for the Assistant Principal for Thomas Jefferson Middle School, Mrs. Frances Bushnell.
Have a motion on the floor. Yes, have a motion on the floor by trustee Brown, second by Vice President Lotham. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Information, Dr. Porter?
Yes, this uh September, ninety-two point seven percent enrollment, and for the month uh, wait, for the month of September, eight thousand one hundred fifty-five students attendance.
Thank you, Dr. Porter. Let's call adjournment of the meeting at seven oh five P M.
So move.
I have a motion on the floor by trustee Getwood, second by uh Secretary Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Are dismissed. Yeah, do I need to sign this? Okay, okay, yeah, 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 he wasn't.